Call the April 15, 2019 Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Borwitz. Alderman Brooks will be absent. Crawford.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Ratcliffe.
Here.
Sanderson.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Eight present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I'd like allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Heavenly Father, City Council gathers here this evening to make decisions for our community. May we use our best skills in judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the items and issues and trust placed before us. And may we always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. In your name we pray, amen. We have no one registered for public comment this evening, which brings us to item number four, Approval of the Minutes. May have a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Ratcliffe, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the approval of the minutes. Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Minutes of April 1, 2019 are approved unanimously. Under public hearing, we have none this evening. Under special messages and proclamations, we have a Comcast Cares Day proclamation, and we have no one here to accept it this evening. So I will sit here if it's okay with you guys and read it from here. Comcast Cares Day. Whereas Comcast remains an active, committed, and engaged member of the Belvidere community and supports the core American value of volunteerism through partnerships, grants, and volunteer activities that empower individuals and organized communities. And whereas Comcast Cares Day is the celebration of service and commitment to year-round volunteerism and has become the nation's largest single-day corporate effort, volunteer effort, that brings employees, families, friends, and community partners together for a common purpose and mission. And whereas Comcast, celebrating its 18th National Comcast Cares Day, has reached important milestones, including 1 million volunteers and more than 6 million volunteer hours at 10,000 projects since Comcast Cares Day started in 2001. And whereas Comcast Cares Day promotes a spirit of corporate responsibility, thanks to the hard work, dedication, and service of volunteers who will be taking part in the Belvidere community cleanup in Spencer Park and at various Belvidere Park District properties on April 27. And whereas the cleanup is a symbol of renewing our connection with nature and engaging the community to enjoy and appreciate our unique public resources. Now therefore, I, Michael Chamberlain, serving as Mayor of Belvidere, do hereby proclaim April 27, 2019, as Comcast Cares Day in Belvidere, Illinois. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Belvidere to be affixed as 15th day of April 2019. We want to thank them for being a tremendous community partner. They have been doing this for a number of years here and in Poplar Grove, too. And we picked up a lot of junk the last few years, and that's a really good goal. Okay. Next up, we have approval of expenditures, first being general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $1,254,411.52. May have a motion to approve these expenditures. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Crawford. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Alderman Sanderson.
Thank you. And the questions I have are, they're not like, I just want some clarification on a few things. They're very small amounts, so I'm not really worried about the prices, but I'm just looking for some information. After page three, charge to Mary's Cafe, I just wondered who Doug Jensen is? Is he like a trustee for RVC or something?
He's the president of RVC.
Okay.
And we have a monthly breakfast meeting, and it was my turn to buy breakfast.
All right, good. Also, after page 10, I was just kind of curious, you know, I think after page 10 here, because I have quite a few pages in here to look through. I was looking at something about gas. Do they, do they get mileage too? There's reimbursement for gas. I was just kind of wondering, like, when we, just a couple of different things for the department has, like, do we, do they, when you fill up for gas, do you just reimburse the gas? Or do you get mileage? How does that work for the departments?
As far as the police department goes, if they're away for training, they have to purchase gas themselves, then yeah, they'll get reimbursed for that, but not mileage.
That's the trains, yeah.
Typically, we're going to have a training vehicle that they're going to be able to use.
Same thing with the...
Yeah, same with the fire department.
And then also on meals, what about, do they get per dime, like, for meals? Because it looks like there's like reimbursement, a lot of reimbursement through here with meals.
Yeah, they get a per diem. So they do get that reimbursement when they're out and training away from town, so.
So that's why I was a little confused on it, because it's showing meals at such-and-such a place for different things. Let me see. Let's see, is that the same for city workers, too? I mean, aren't union people?
Yeah, the policy is always the same, so, but now that we got the credit cards, we can put the meals directly on the credit cards, and the employees then don't get reimbursed or they don't receive the per diem. You just pay for the meals instead.
So officers don't get per diem?
No, officers are set by contract. They get a meal allowance, depending on the training that they're going to. And the way that we're doing it within the police department, if their training is three or less days, then they pay for the meals and get reimbursed according to contract. If it's more than that, then they'll be issued a credit card to use.
Yeah, so that's, I'm just getting a little confused, because I'm not having any problem with the amounts or anything like that. Like I said, for all this stuff. Also, I see that it seems like each department has Amazon accounts that they have to pay for. I'm kind of wondering why we don't consolidate those, even though they're not a lot, that we would consolidate ordering something from, so you don't have to pay a monthly fee for the police department, fire department, public works department, and the city employees.
I'm not aware of a monthly fee for an Amazon account.
We pay two.
What's in here?
We pay two. The city pays, we have one, and the police department actually gets the reduced rate, which I think is $6.49 a month.
Yeah, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong.
For Prime.
Oh, for your Prime, for free shipping. $119 a year, you get free shipping, so we don't have to pay shipping on anything that comes.
I understand.
For the entire year, so.
But what, you know, it seemed like each department's got their own account.
Because it's part of their budget.
There's, I think there's four different Prime accounts, but I think two, only two have, are paying the Prime membership. The police have, there's a $6.49, and then the administration is the $12.99.
But I just thought...
Nobody else pays anything for...
I just thought it would make sense to order centrally. I don't know what Prime, I think if I remember paying, I pay about $100 bucks a year, right?
Yeah, it's $119 bucks now, I think.
So it sounds like they pay it on a monthly thing, so if you're doing it four times, you're paying $400 instead of $100. It's not breaking the bank, but I just wanted to bring out that maybe that's an idea we should think about.
We have two different Prime.
We have two, and theirs is only $6.49 a month.
Okay.
$6.49.
There was one for February and March.
Right.
So it looked like there was two, but it was for different months. But, so I'm just curious why we don't consolidate it all, so everybody's got Prime. $100, just something for the council to think about, you know, it's not...
Becky, is it possible to consolidate into one account? And can we get the $6.49 rate, which is way less than $119?
We've looked into the $6.49 rate. We're not quite sure how they got the $6.49 rate. So if we, if we can get it, we will. But we have found in the multiple locations, it's nice to have more than just the one Amazon account. We only, the city administration is the only one in this building that pays for the Prime, just so if we need to in a heartbeat, we can get something here the next day without paying the shipping. So not all the, not all the accounts are paying the Prime membership.
Becky, would it be easier to track having the separate accounts as opposed to the one sign-on where anybody could have access to that?
Well, I also like it separate, just because of, we've had some mishap credit card issues, because whoever's, whoever's account it is, whether it's admin or police, it's tied to usually a certain credit card. And otherwise, if we just did one account, then there's a chance of putting it on a different credit card, or it's just, it's, I don't know. This is just easier, it's easier to track, in my opinion.
Just a question, looking for ways to, you know, maybe do some, and I also saw something after page 27, and it was only 99 cents for that month. So it sounded like a Smith-Pickman, but I was just curious, it may be something for public, it's something for Public Works, Apple iTunes, and, you know, maybe the Apple iTunes is for some camera or something, but it looks like it's for iTunes, so I'm kind of curious about that.
It's data storage.
Data storage, yeah, like, like a cloud, okay. I thought maybe it possibly was, but...
It's bandwidth expansion by, what is it, 50, 50 gigabytes, they charge an additional 99 cents every time you use 50 gigabytes over and above the normal band range.
So, okay, pretty much, most of my questions were answered, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Sure. Anybody else have any questions or comments concerning the general fund, special fund expenditures? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Borwitz.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
General and special fund expenditures are approved unanimously, which brings us to water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $354,980.06. May have a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Sanderson, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning these expenditures. Hearing none, all those in favor, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Borwitz.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Water and sewer fund expenditures are approved unanimously. Brings us to number eight. Committee reports and minutes of city officers. Please note that items A through I have been received and placed on file, which brings us to item J, which are minutes of committee of the whole, building, planning, and zoning and public works of April 8, 2019. May have a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Ratcliffe. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the minutes of April 8. Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Borwitz.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Minutes are approved unanimously. Brings us to item nine, Unfinished Business. It's an ordinance 443H, a second reading, an ordinance amending section 114-404B of Belvidere Municipal Code to modify sewer rates. Since we are not going to modify sewer rates at this time, we want to put this on the floor and vote it down. May have a motion to approve? Okay, a motion to remove it from the table. Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Sanderson. All those in favor, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Borwitz.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Motion to remove from the table unanimously. I have a motion to approve ordinance 443H, second reading. Motion to approve, second. Second, Alderman Borwitz. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Remember, we're voting this down, those opposed nay.
Sanderson.
No.
Snow.
No.
Stevens.
No.
Borwitz.
No.
Crawford.
No.
Frank.
No.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
No.
Ratcliffe.
No.
Nine in favor.
Ordinance 443H is voted down unanimously. Does that feel good, everybody? Vote it down, okay. Brings to item 10, New Business. We have three first readings, which are silent readings, but as usual, I'll read them into the record, so the folks at home can hear about them. Ordinance 451H, first reading, an ordinance authorizing a sale of certain personal property, public works, 2007 Ford pickup truck. Ordin, B, is ordinance 452H, a first reading, an ordinance in annexing certain territory owned by the city of Belvidere located at Highline Street and Lake Shore Drive to the city of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois. Item C is ordinance 453H, a first reading, an ordinance amending chapter 150, zoning ordinance of the municipal code, exterior, commercial vehicle, and equipment storage in office and commercial districts, temporary signs, freestanding signs table, building signs table, permitted building and freestanding sign by type and zoning district table, mobile home park residential development, appendix C land use summary chart, neighborhood office district, planned office district, neighborhood business district, planned business district, general business district, planned industrial district, general industrial district, and heavy industrial district. Those will come back for further discussion and final reading. Yes, Alderman Snow?
B, the one in regards to the annexation with the property over by the park over in Christie Lane, Highland, and Lake Shore. I noticed when I was reading through the packet for some of the minutes regarding that particular area, and there was a variance for the pavilion and that, that there was an issue with one of the neighbors that got notified that parking seemed to be of a concern. So I didn't know if that is something we need to address, or take a look at, or secure...
I can address that question. No, the council actually doesn't need to, because the variance is decided upon by the Plains Attorney Commission, and that variance has nothing really to do with the annexation. The variance is request for park that's not being annexed, it's right in the city. They already approved that, that variance, so it will actually not come before the city council. There was one person that came in with a concern over parking, the only person in the community. They have multiple vehicles in their family, and frankly, they've had police and care at their property multiple times for code enforcement violations with respect to the parking of their vehicles. I shouldn't say code enforcement violations, but complaints at least, from their neighbors. So their concern was, we're simply adding more traffic to the community by putting in the pavilion. The commission heard that, took into account, asked some questions based upon that, but ultimately voted unanimously to approve the variance.
But do we, at this point, realizing that somebody brought the concern, is that something we need to look at, should look at, or has been looked at? You know, somebody did voice a concern, so I didn't know if it's something we should look at doing something with.
Sean?
So this is where we hold our summer lunch program. The kids that we have there, typically it's been on Fridays. This year, we're expanding it to Monday through Fridays. I'll walk there. Nobody drives there, even the parents walk there. So it's a neighborhood park. I feel a lot of them will be coming from the neighborhood to use the facilities, and that parking will not be an issue.
Okay, because they were voicing concern once the pavilions there, that they thought more people would wind up using the facility and create an issue.
And it is open to everybody, but I think you'll see a lot of the people from that neighborhood will be using it. And the person that was complaining actually has a storefront now on Logan Avenue to take their business to, that they were getting in trouble for, parking.
Any additional comments or questions? If not, we'll move on to item D, Resolution 2096-2019, is resolution approving the city of Belvidere Enforcement Response Plan. May have a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Frank, second. Alderman Borwitz, questions or comments? Alderman Sanderson.
Thanks, Your Honor. Well, I know that we had this in committee last week, and we had a little briefing, a little bit by the city attorney, I think, but we got a whole, we got a whole 180 pages about to read through, which I felt, you know, I didn't really have time to do that. What's the, what's time-sensitive thing to have this approved this week, or if we could have it back at committee? What, what's the timeframe that, so we can have more time to read through all these pages? When is it due for the EPA to get approved from this Baxter enforcement? Because we didn't have this report that's attached to this, that's dated March 2019 with us, at the meeting when we had the thing at committee, so...
Okay, the enforcement response plan that you have in front of you is actually already incorporated into our codes and ordinances. So there's no, no changes made, we already have this in place. It's already, we're already going by it. This is simply a requirement from the US EPA that we have a resolution by the city council formally adopting it. So it's already in place, with all these provisions have already been there.
No changes.
This has been updated, well, this has been updated and gone through and basically approved by the EPA. We've started doing this project, I think, back in 2012, I want to say? And through the lengthy process of what we've had to go through, did you do all these updates? And the EPA has finally signed off on it, said, yep, this is approvable. Now we need, we being the US EPA, need the resolution from the city council. So it's been in place for quite a while for the city of Belvidere, and everybody that's comes under the provisions of it have been abiding by it for quite a while.
So I wouldn't want to kick this back if there hasn't been any changes, but, you know, since we got this booklet, I just thought maybe we needed to look at it. I don't like to vote on stuff if it's, if there's not any, you know, if there's not any change, that'll have a problem. That's certainly, I assumed that would have been in your package previously, if it wasn't, I apologize, I don't know why. The, yeah, I went through it, actually. I shouldn't say this, but I don't understand why the EPA even wants this, because previously we presented everything that's in that packet to them. They said, it's okay, they blessed it. This council passed an ordinance adopting everything that's in that emergency response, or that response plan. Adopting ordinance is already codified in your codes. It has been for, I want to say, a year, year and a half. So it's already been in our codes for a long time, and now they want a resolution saying, yes, you already adopted the code and you're going to enforce it. Yeah, okay. It really makes no sense why they're asking for it, but they are, so...
And this all goes back to, again, the US EPA's supervision oversight of our wastewater treatment plant and the MPDS permit that we have to get every five years, renewed every five years, through the US EPA. And this is, the enforcement response plan is just a small portion of, of part of that MPDS process.
So like I said, as long as there's no changes to it, I'm okay with it. I just don't like approving stuff when we get a stack of, you know, things, and I think it's our due diligence that we have to look at this stuff. I would agree with you. I did go through, and it is the same, is what's in our code.
Additional questions or comments? Yes. Alderman Freeman.
So Brent, this is like, a lot of the, like, the corporations, like Dean Foods, General Mills, and stuff like, the stuff they put down the drains, this pertains to all that mostly, right?
Yeah, and the pre-treatment program, I believe we may have five industries currently operating in the city of Belvidere that have to comply or go through the pre-treatment process.
So do...
And the pre-treatment process, what it is, our wastewater treatment plant can handle certain loadings of materials through the plant. And if you exceed those loadings, then you are required to pre-treat before you actually send, send your discharge to our wastewater treatment plant, and that's what this pertains to.
So do we send somebody there periodically to like test? When I worked at Dean Foods, we would test the drains, and periodically, there would be salmonella, but like, they would take care of that in-house? Do you guys send somebody and test for that stuff?
We do daily samples, yes.
Anybody else? There are no other questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Frank.
Can we back up to ordinance 453H? An ordinance amending chapter 150 zoning ordinance. Is that something that's new, or is this required also?
It's newest first reading, yes.
Okay.
Was that committee last week? And was moved out, committee forwarded to this week? It came out planning, that's right, so it's coming directly out planning. So yes, it is an all, it's entirely new ordinance that I encourage you to read, and if you have any questions, give Gina a call on that, but there are several portions of the zoning code, which we are proposing text amendments to, because either they contradicted each other, we caught it finally, or it just made more sense logically for certain types of relief to make the changes. So certainly, if you have questions on that, I'd encourage you to call Gina.
It's an ongoing effort to clarify our codes, because some of them need a little clarification with the passage of time and different regulations and so forth, so, yeah. And we can talk about this again next week if you'd like to, but I would read through, and anything you have a question on, underline it, and call Gina.
Yeah, pause, I forgot that things out planning don't go to committee, which is weird.
Okay, so we're back to voting on Resolution 2096-2019. All those in favor, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Borwitz.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Resolution 2096-2019 is approved unanimously. Yes.
So just for clarity, the ordinance that Ms. Frank was asking about, the, we're not bringing that back to committee, this is going to show up three weeks from now as a full-blown vote, and we'll wind up discussing it there.
Unless the county, unless the council wants to bring it back to committee, yes, that's correct. Okay. Yeah. And give us a call if you have any questions on it, certainly.
And the title is a little misleading. I asked Gina if I had to have all that on the agenda. She said, yeah, but it didn't really pertain to everything, so the title is just a little misleading.
The way, the way we handle those is, we'll store up, if we find conflicts in the code that need to be fixed, she'll store five or six in a row, and then just do one amendment to take care of all of them, so.
Alderman Sanderson.
Just in relationship, just to make things simple, I guess, is there anything major that's changed that we don't, that we don't already have, like making our signs bigger, or any of that, any of that kind of stuff in there? No, there isn't.
I thought there was something to do with temporary signage cleanup, as far as people I thought there was something to do with temporary signage cleanup, as far as people putting banners out for an extended period of time.
There is, there's nothing major making anything bigger. What it does do is impose certain time limits for certain temporary signs. Obviously, certain signs, like political signs, we're not allowed to regulate anymore, but there were proportions of one section of code that said, these signs can only be out for sixty days in a calendar year. And the next section with a different type of temporary sign, it didn't have that limitation in there. I was kind of like, well, why? Let's put that limitation there as well. So, it actually limits those temporary signs, specifically what we're talking about, you know, those air floppy things that people put out in front of their businesses. There was no restriction on the timeline for those things. So, we're putting that restriction, that's in one portion of the code, also in that section. So, no, no, nothing, no bigger signs, is what I was getting to.
Anything else? Motion is the city-county coordinating committee, March thirteenth, twenty nineteen. Motion will be presented by Co-Chairman Snow. Co-Chairman Snow, you have the floor.
Yee-haw, again. A, motion to approve the courthouse basement antenna amplifier from the Installation Service Inc. in the amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, invoice number five eight nine three, with a fifty-fifty split between the city and the county.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Alderman Snow?
So, Becky, maybe you would be able to tell us, so, in the overall scheme of the budgetary issues, is this something that's covered, or are we deficit spending on something like this?
The overall budget for the public safety building, we're fine. We're deficit spending in this line item, because it's hard for, what, a couple of reasons. It's hard for us to predict when things like this happen that aren't budgeted. I mean, I try and budget for some of the unknown, but, you know, we don't always have it. The second thing is, the county's on a different budget cycle than we are. So, their budget started December one, so they may all of a sudden start purchasing items that's in their budget, but isn't in ours. So, we try and communicate and make sure that I'm budgeting for everything, but we can't always do that.
So, generally speaking, we're covered on this, we're not...
Generally speaking, yeah, we're under in the salaries line item for dispatch nine one one, so that'll cover this.
Alderman Sanderson?
Yeah, maybe you could tell us why they wanted the upgrade, or if the old one was broken, or maybe the chiefs or somebody could tell us what the need for this is, just so we know where we're spending it.
Yeah, the current amplifier that we have, we're using old cellphone technology for our, to amplify our portable radios, and it's just outdated, and it's something that we're going to need to update, so that way, we can be sure to continue to get radio communication in the basement portions of both the courthouse and the PSP. That seems to be the biggest problems in the basements.
And Wi-Fi doesn't transmit it through, or something?
No, it's radio frequency, it's not Wi-Fi, so. And it's for our portable radios, and we were using old cellphone technology, which that wasn't the purpose for it to begin with, but we were able to utilize it, but it's not sufficient.
Anybody else? All those in favor will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Stevens.
Aye.
Borowitz.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
B, motion to approve TRC invoice number three four three zero two five in the amount of eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-three cents, with a fifty-fifty split between the city and the county.
Motion out of committee. Questions or comments? Alderman Snow?
And partially related because of landfill, Brent, can you give us any insight on how it's going with the leach aids coming out of the landfill, and do we do a charge, or we just treat that without invoicing the county or anything?
We've been treating that without invoicing the county. We've been pumping out, now that the repairs have been made to the leach aid collection system, we're pumping out more leach aid on a regular basis, which we go out and then put into our jet truck, and then we take it down to the treatment plant for treatment. So, that actually has been working out well. And then we just got our new operating permit in the mail today, back from the EPA, and most of our requests that we had for reducing the amount of constituents that we have to test for was approved. So, we've gotten a reduction here lately on the number of wells that we have to monitor, and also the number of constituents out of each well, so we're saving a little bit of money. We're trying to, trying to save as much as we can through what the EPA will allow us to.
There's no questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none, all those in favor approve, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Borowitz.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
C, motion to approve Neveen Franzetti invoice number one six four three nine in the amount of four hundred and ninety dollars with a fifty-fifty split between the city and the county.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none, all those in favor approve, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Borowitz.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, Chairman Snow. We have motions of building, planning, and zoning of April eighth, twenty nineteen, also presented by Chairman Snow. Chairman Snow, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to butcher this name. Motion to consent and approve the appointment of Mr. Carl Genwich to the Belvidere Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term ending May of twenty twenty-four.
Motion out of committee. Questions or comments for the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor approve, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Borowitz.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
And I've worked real hard on this. Mr. Gunebu is approved for me.
B, I got another one to butcher some names. Motion to consent and approve appointment of Mr. David Kumero.
Perfect.
And Ms. Alexandra Omatek to the Belvidere Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term ending May of twenty twenty-two.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Alderman Snow?
And, so, Becky, I know in the world of the planning commission, I think they're, they have five-year or seven-year stents that they do, but what does the generic preservation term, is that a three-year, or is that...
Um, how many times have I, I think it's three. I think you're right, I think it's three years.
Are they all the same?
They stagger, they're all the same, they're all three years, just staggered, yeah.
Okay, questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor?
One other question. When it, back on the zoning, do we, do we know if we're up to full staff on that? For some reason, when I was counting the numbers, it looked like we might be low, or maybe I was just missing. It's a seven commission, never mind, somebody was missing on the minutes, that's what it was, never mind.
Yeah, I think, I think it's full.
It is a seven commission.
Paul, Paul wasn't there.
There was one aware of the vacancy, but... They come and go. All those in favor will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Borowitz.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, Chairman Snow. Next, motions of public works of April eighth, twenty nineteen, will be presented by Co-Chairman Stevens. Chairman Stevens?
A, motion to approve water and sewer connection fees and meter fees to be waived for, and that Habitat for Humanity reimburse the city for direct expenses for the installation of a sanitary sewer service and a water service to the property line of six two one East Locust Street.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none, all those in favor will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Borowitz.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.